Of course, I am here. Thank you.
Let the record show Mr. Galloway had a, I mean, Mr. Baraski had a work commitment and isn't going to be here. We'll begin with the public comment. The only name on the list I have is Tony Batiste. Sorry. Sorry. We're having tactical difficulties tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first off, congratulations to Aaron and Brian on winning the election. I did note that your election materials made a point of supporting the township police. So I would like to hold you to that. I would like to see our police chief back to giving his reports. I would actually like to see the two new hirees who are not policemen with falls, but who are monitoring or whatever they're doing out of jobs. I don't think they're necessary. I think we're duplicating the stuff that we already have. And I think you're harassing them. But that's my opinion. Also, we used to have, back there at the table when you came in, there used to be a page that also had the reports from the engineer as far as what projects were going on, what the status was and everything else. And I realize somebody doesn't want to use a lot of paper and we have to pay for that. But is there any reason why that can't be online? Is there any reason why the bills can't be online? So that when you're discussing them, we know what you're talking about? You know, to get up here and say, well, a third of this or two thirds of this are salaries and benefits and what that, well, what's the other third? I'd like to know. And also, I'd like to see the budget also online. I know you have it at the township. I know it's at the library. But those offices close at five. The library doesn't have late hours every day of the week. But you all have computers. All this information is on computers. Is there any reason why it can't be online? And it would be nice to put it as supplemental information, whatever you want to call it, right next to the supervisor meeting where you have the agenda and eventually you will have the video or whatever. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, we're going to start with the presentation for the winners of the scarecrow contest. Mr. Andrews.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. We've been holding this contest for several years now. And this is the first year we did letting the public vote on it. Typically, the park and rec board chose the winners, but this year we did a social media voting on it. We had a lot of, lot of great responses and I'm here to, you know, award the winners of this year's contest. So I'm going to ask them all to come up here and take a photo. We have a certificate and a gift card for each of the participants. So I'm going to announce them. They're going to come up and take a photo with you all. So third place winner is Molly Hanson. Second place winners are the Bowman Boys. And our first place winners are Kids Care.
Hold your plaques up. All right, thank you. Item number two, certificate of appropriateness, nine Old Locust Street. This is pretty straightforward. I don't know. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Galloway?
None.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
I have none. Anything needed from professionals?
No.
Mr. Tequita?
No comment.
Is there any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three, North Point Falls Township Industrial LLC, building 20, preliminary and final land development, one Ben Fairless Drive.
Good evening. Frank Dillon here on behalf of the applicant. And with me I have Jeremy Michael from North Point and Eric Clase from Gilmore. We were provided resolution last month and the matter was continued. And we were provided with a supplemental resolution this evening. I think you're aware it's a 267,000 square foot warehouse. I don't know if you want me to go into any more detail than that. The first resolution, there's some typographical things that we're going to work out administratively. But we're withdrawing waiver one B, which is requesting a waiver from the wetland margins. That's been worked out by the engineers. The plans have been worked out. And the second resolution that is prepared just added that regarding the sidewalks, if sidewalks are installed in the future, applicant will then provide sidewalks to connect to them. So other than that, there's a steep slopes waiver for man-made steep slopes and another minor waiver on the plan. So we're asking your approval, preliminary final approval. We can answer whatever questions you might have.
All right, any questions or comments, Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
I have none. It's pretty straightforward. Any professionals?
No comments.
No comments.
No comment.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That's resolution 202338. Thank you. That takes us to item number four, Triple Net Investments LLC, waiver of land development, 9151 Bristol Pike.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Mizella with Dynamic Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant seeking waiver for final land development plan for the construction of a 13,200 square foot maintenance facility at the previously approved trailer storage parking lot on Old Bristol Pike. Project was before the township in 2021 for an earth disturbance permit and constructed in 2022. But since the construction of the parking lot, the tenant demands have changed looking for a maintenance facility at the parking lot. So the applicant is proposing to add.
Can you use a microphone?
Sorry.
That's okay.
At the north end of the lot to comply with all building setbacks. Right now, we have a review letter from the township engineer. All will comply items. And then I believe everyone should have a draft resolution in front of you with similar conditions. Again, all will comply from the applicant should the board wish to approve their request tonight. Happy to answer any questions about the plan or the request if you have any tonight.
All right, it's very straightforward. Mr. Galloway, any questions?
No, no questions on this.
Ms. Mullin?
Just, and I think this is to Mr. Tequita, when we waive land development, who becomes in charge of enforcing that these conditions are adhered to?
Mrs. Mullin, we, the engineer's office requires as part of the process an earth disturbance submission. And so through the earth disturbance approval, we make sure that the conditions of the review for the waiver land development are met.
The engineer?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, what is the game plan with the sanitary sewer? Are you doing an onsite treatment?
Correct. We're going through approval right now for on-lot septic facility just behind the building here.
Is there a reason why you're not going to tap into the local?
Yeah, we're not within distance of a feasible connection for this property.
So it's not monetarily?
Yeah, I think we're over two miles away or mile away from the nearest.
The ordinance requires you to connect if you're within 150 feet, I believe.
150 feet? Doesn't the 529 plan kind of require that whole area to go to public water and sewer eventually?
I believe the attorneys can answer better than myself, but yes, that's been a work in progress for so many years. And I believe that the new 537 requires it in another 10-year period. We'd have to double check that, but it has been addressed. It's, you know, the improvement that's impossible or not feasible to construct because it's millions of dollars to get the pump stations proper. I'm speaking a little bit out of turn, but I believe that's the problem with it. But I do believe that we are obligated at some point to convert that area to public sewer.
We will have public water here for the facility.
Okay, we can review the plan, Mr. Palmer, and give you a better update at the next meeting.
That's all. Thank you.
Any professionals? Anything new?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
The only comment I would suggest maybe to help Mr. Palmer is that the, this will fall under the 537 approval where there will have to be an escrow posted to ensure the long-term viability of the commercial septic.
Okay. Any public comment needed? See no hands? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made. All second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
That's resolution 39.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That takes us to item number five, Safe Store Old Lincoln LLC, preliminary and final land development, 935 Old Lincoln Highway.
Good evening. Julie Von Spreckelson from the law firm of Eastburn and Gray here tonight on behalf of the applicant, which is the equitable owner of the property located at 935 Lincoln Highway. The property is 2.97 acres and is located in the HC district. And it's currently improved, if I know it, the Michaels Restaurant Bar Lounge. And what applicant is proposing is a complete redevelopment of that site. And that would include the demolition of the Michaels Restaurant building. And there's also a residential structure on that property as well. So that will also be demolished. And then the applicant proposes the construction of a three-story self, a three-story self-storage facility with a building footprint of 36,550 square feet and 28 parking spaces and then associated improvements including buffering landscaping and stormwater management facilities. Applicant received a use variance to permit this use in the HC district from the zoning hearing board back in June and then submitted the preliminary final land development plans that are before you for review in August. Those plans were revised after we received the first round of review letters. And so they were revised to meet all those comments in the review letters. We are requesting two waivers. The first is a pretty standard waiver. It's the 19178C2. That's a partial waiver from providing all existing features within 200 feet of the property. We're providing the aerial photograph. I think that's pretty standard. The second waiver we're requesting is from 1916D1A and that's from providing sidewalk along the property frontage. There is no sidewalk on either property to the east and to the west of the property. So it would just literally be a sidewalk that goes nowhere and just stops. That section of the township subdivision land development ordinance allows an applicant to provide a fee-in lieu of installing the sidewalk. So that is what the applicant is requesting. They'd like to provide the fee-in lieu rather than installing the sidewalk. So those are the two waivers that are requested. We did receive the approval resolution and we reviewed it. We have two clarifications and one change. And I did discuss these with the township solicitor and your township engineer. And I think they're agreeable to those changes. It was just the intervening holiday. We weren't able to revise the approval resolution in time. So I just want to point those out very quickly. The first clarification is the fifth wherest clause. We want to clarify that the proposed building is three-story building and the building footprint is 36,550 square feet. The second clarification is to paragraph two of the waivers requested in granted section. And that's just to clarify that the plan before you is preliminary final. It just notices preliminary. But throughout the rest of the resolution, it does say preliminary final. And finally, the one change we're requesting is to paragraph one of section D, which is the general comments. It relates to extension of the water line to the Easterly property line. And since that is a TOFA issue, that's an authority issue and not so much a township issue, we were asking that that comment be deleted. And also in Joe's review letter, he has that comment as well. And what we'd like to change it to is that the proposed eight-inch DIP water line will be constructed in accordance with section 19164 of the Township Subdivision Land Development Ordinance because that's what governs the public water facilities. And we have to comply with TOFA regulations with regard to that. Otherwise, everything is acceptable within the approval resolution.
All right. Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
Yeah, I just asked Mr. Jones to speak too, the request for section D, item one, the water line.
Yes, I believe that our comment was picked up from the planning commission's recommendation because I believe they were trying to make a water line extension request to the applicant. And so our comment was based on their comment. But I agree that the governing ordinance code is the 19164, which says that you have to provide water to the lots relevant to the subdivision and land development.
Got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
I have none. Is there any professional comment?
No comments. No comments.
Any public comment? Tony?
I believe that behind this property and included in the property, there's a body of water. Is that correct?
No, I don't think so.
Is there a creek or anything that goes through there? Okay, thank you. My mistake then.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That's resolution 202340.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Item six, proposed budget presentation and authorization to advertise.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to present the proposed budget for 2024 for your review. The proposed tax rate for 2024 is 8.97 mils. That's the same rate as last year. There are seven tax funds that make up the total millage rate that's charged to township residents. The general fund is the chief operating fund of the township. The street lighting fund is used to account for the cost of electricity and maintenance of the highway and streetlights located in the township. The fire protection fund helps to support our local fire companies. The fire hydrant fund is restricted to expenditures for the maintenance and repair of fire hydrants located within the township. The parks and recreation fund is restricted to the development of recreational programs and our township parks. The Fallsington Library Fund helps to support our local library. And the rescue squad fund helps to support our local rescue squads. That brings us to our total millage rate of 8.97 mils. The millage distribution remains unchanged for 2024. For every tax dollar that was paid to us in 2023, only four cents was received by Falls Township. The balance was collected by the County of Bucks and the Pensbury School District. Our residents' tax dollars are used to provide a full range of municipal services, which includes police and fire protection, construction and maintenance of streets and storm sewers, recycling, residential solid waste pickup, zoning regulations, building inspections, parks and recreational activities, and the maintenance and replacement of streetlights. Contributions to our fire companies, rescue squads, and the library that serve Falls Township residents are also funded through those real estate tax dollars. What do all these services cost our taxpayers? Based on an assessment of $30,000, a Falls Township resident paid $269.10 in 2023. This is by far the lowest cost of our neighboring municipalities. Please note, our neighboring municipalities' figures also include assessments for trash and leaf pickups, which are free to Falls Township residents due to our partnership with Waste Management. Some highlights of the 2024 proposed budget are our 2024 projected revenues, which include the earned income tax to fund the operating costs of the general fund in the amount of $7 million; reduced reliance by the general fund on host community fees of $9 million; reliance by the general fund on resource recovery fees of $950,000; and additional projected revenues, including our local services tax at $650,000, cable TV franchise fees at $550,000, real estate transfer tax at $900,000, building, electrical, and fire permits at a combined $1,350,000, and our state pension system assistance at $700,000. Regarding our 2024 pension obligation, while the state pension assistance that the township receives has remained relatively static, the township's minimum municipal obligation to the pension plans has risen dramatically. As shown by the red line on the chart, the township's pension obligation doubled from $1.3 million in 2012 to $2.6 million in 2017. For 2018 through 2020, our pension obligation was over $2.8 million each year. Since 2021, it has been over $3.1 million per year. As you can see, the assistance we receive from the state, shown by the green line, does little to offset our rising pension costs. The net cost to the township is projected to be $2,615,577 for 2024. The budgeted expenditures from the general fund total $26,371,758. 52.9% of that amount, or $14 million, is used to provide police services to our community. Some 2024 proposed capital projects. Our new municipal complex, the township has budgeted $34.7 million for the design and construction of the new municipal complex begun in 2023 with completion anticipated in December of 2024. Over half of the cost of this project was funded by the proceeds of general obligation bonds series of 2023. The first principal and interest payment on these bonds comes due in 2024 in the amount of $2,597,750. Road improvements, various road construction, repair, and maintenance projects have been budgeted in 2024. They include Amesbury Road drainage, South Olds Boulevard culvert, Rice Drive culvert, Community Park culvert, repairs at Martins Creek, and Briar Root Lane drainage. These projects have all been allotted funding of a combined $2,477,000 in the 2024 proposed budget. Tree trimming and removal, there are currently many dead or dying trees throughout the township, creating a hazardous situation for residents and visitors. We have budgeted $75,000 to continue our tree trimming and removal program.
Excuse me.
The Falls Cares Program. $200,000 has been allotted to develop the Falls Cares Program, which involves the cleanup of properties within Falls Township that have fallen into various stages of disrepair. This program will have the added component of a social worker to address the broader needs of the residents. With this program, the township is striving for action with compassion. Police purchases. The purchase of four vehicles, computer equipment, firearms, training and supplies, and various other equipment and training for the police department have been budgeted at a cost of $470,000. Public Works purchases. The Public Works Department needs to replace seven aging pieces of equipment in their fleet. $469,700 has been budgeted for these purchases. And a playground replacement. $500,000 has been budgeted for the purchase and installation of a playground and swings for children ages two to 12 to replace the existing playground in phase two of the community park. This all-inclusive play space allows for wheelchair access and includes a sensory dome with amenities tailored to children on the autism spectrum. We are currently seeking grant funding to help offset the cost of this play structure. Based on the proposed budget, a total of $78,821,601 is projected to be spent in the year 2024. The budget schedule for '24 includes tonight's discussion of the proposed budget, advertisement of the 2024 proposed budget on November 28th, additional budget discussions from now through December 19th, public inspection of the proposed budget from November 30th to December 19th. And it will be posted online at that point for public review. And it will be posted online at that point for public review. And adoption of the final 2024 budget at the December 19th Board of Supervisors Meeting. That concludes the presentation of the 2024 proposed budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Rukoff. Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No, a great presentation. I really appreciated the budget workshop meeting that we held earlier a couple weeks ago. It was very informative.
Thank you. That really helped with planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No, I just want to echo Mr. Galloway. That was great having that workshop and, you know, getting in there and asking the directors, you know, some of their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mullin?
Thank you. You did a great job. Can you just reiterate where somebody could find the budget online?
Um, yeah, on the township website. Go to the Finance Department. And under the forms in that department are all of our past budgets. And this proposed budget for 2024 will be posted on the 30th. And it will be available for inspection until it passes on the 19th of December.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, um, public comment needed? Just no hands. Is there a motion to advertise the budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rukoff. All right. Item seven, consider reappointment by resolution to appoint auditor for the 2023 financial audit. I apologize, I forgot my glasses tonight. That's why I'm having trouble seeing.
It's me again. We're asking the Board to pass a resolution to reappoint Zelenkovsky Axelrod as our auditor for the 2023 financial audit. This would be year three of a three-year quote that they had provided. The cost will be $27,800. We're very satisfied with their services. They handed everything on time and did a thorough examination of the financials for the last two years. So this would be the third year.
Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
None.
Ms. Mullin? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, so after this year, we go out to?
We'll go out to bid again, yes.
Now, or do we usually flip and go to another vendor, or do we usually stick with the lowest for better?
It depends. We were with our last auditor for quite a number of years, and they are no longer doing the municipal audits. So when we went out to bid this last time, we had to select from a whole new field of auditors because our prior one wasn't even available. So we settled on Zelenkovsky Axelrod, and we'll see where the bids come in next year.
Thank you.
Any public comment needed? Just no hands. What was their name again?
Zelenkovsky Axelrod.
Is there a motion to appoint them as our auditor?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's Resolution 202341. Thank you, Mrs. Rukoff again.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider proposal for Moish Shans Agency for Builders Risk Coverage. Somebody tell us what this is.
The Board is being asked to consider approval of builders' risk coverage for the construction of the new building. This insurance coverage will cover both any risk to the construction of the new building as well as at the temporary location. Total premium is $33,028.
And this wouldn't be covered by our regular insurance?
Excuse me?
This wouldn't be covered by any insurance we already have?
Correct, if this is separate.
And where do we find this company?
Uh, this is the same company that does our regular insurance.
Oh, okay. Any questions for board members? Mr. Galloway?
None.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, are you talking about our operating budget, or is this part of the bond money to pay for this?
This money would, this would come out of the cost of the building either bond or paid by us.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes. Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dents?
Yes.
Brian Galloway?
Yes.
Consider awarding workers' compensation contract for the year 2024.
Me again. Uh, the Board is being asked to award the workers' compensation contract to Delaware Valley Workers' Compensation Trust. The total renewal premium for the year 2024 is $459,184. The overall workers' compensation premium for the township is $11,737 higher than last year due to an increased experience modification, higher state workers' insurance fund premium, and a lower available reserved balance.
Okay. Any questions from Mrs. Rukoff? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Is there any public comment needed? No hands. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes. Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dents?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Item ten, consider a resolution setting reasonable fees for costs incurred by Falls Township in complying with requests for criminal history investigative information pursuant to the crime victim right of access, subchapter to the Criminal History Record Information Act, as well as setting reasonable fees for costs incurred by Falls Township in complying with requests for disclosure of police audio and video recordings pursuant to Act 22 of 2017. Mr. Clark? Why do you bring him?
So this resolution, the law has changed to allow the township to pass on some of the legal fees that are incurred when we're processing requests for criminal record information or videos pursuant to Act 22. Historically, those costs have been borne by the township, but with the recent amendments to these two laws, this allows the township to pass those fees along to requesters. And at times, there are substantial fees that are incurred in doing so. We have looked at the, what has been considered reasonable fees and costs based on what has been imposed by the district attorney's office, along with the township solicitor's hourly rate, and we've put together the attached resolution, which is in a form acceptable for adoption this evening.
And we've never done this before, right?
We have not. Up until these two laws were amended, we were not allowed to pass along any of these costs. The township was required to absorb them. And we have processed a number of requests regarding both Act 22 and the Criminal History and Information's Record Act.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
None.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, yeah, one question. If somebody were, was to ask for something digital, is there a fee for that, or is it just copies?
So this is actually for legal fees. Oftentimes, we have to review and redact records that would have some criminal history information, and we'd have to review videos. So this is actually for legal fees, so it would apply for digital records as well as physical paper copies.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment needed? No hands. Is there a motion? Resolution 202342?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven. Consider resolution of the Township of Falls Bucks County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing an application for a grant pursuant to the Green Region Grants Program from the Philadelphia Energy Company, PICO, and designated the township manager as the official to facilitate the grant application and execute all relevant documents.
Uh, Brian Andrews is here to discuss the grant, if you have any questions regarding that.
I can give you a little background on it. It's simply, this resolution is part of our grant application. We're looking to upgrade the light post fixtures up at Falls and Commemorative Park. We're converting from halide to LED lighting. And this grant, this project is eligible under the grant, so we're eligible to receive 50% back on those costs. So, and a resolution is required for submission to the grant. That's basically what you're considering here.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. It sounded more complicated than it is. Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions. Good work.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
I have none. Is there any public comment needed? No hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's Resolution 202343. Item number twelve. Consider approval of professional services agreement between Falls Township and County of Bucks for human services co-responder program.
That would be me again. So the township has had a program for co-responders to ride along with our police officers in responding to certain calls. The initial funding was through grant funding from the county. That grant funding has now expired, so this would allow the township to continue to maintain that service. My understanding from conversations with both the manager and the chief of police is that's a very successful program that they would like to continue. So this agreement will allow that to do, to continue.
And how much is it?
Mr. Tequita is double checking.
Oh, $210,000.
For two years.
Maximum of $210 over two years, approximately $105 annually.
Chief Whitney, would you like to comment on the benefits of this program? I know it's been very, very successful. Please.
It really has, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This program has been a wonderful thing for Falls Township. Just last month alone, in October, our co-responder had 35 referrals. When we talked last week, she was up to 20-something for this month. Now, each one of those referrals takes time that an officer would have been spending with that individual or that family, and takes that onto our co-responder so that we're more available for calls for service and for other issues. Our co-responder, over a weekend, typically gets over 100 text messages and emails from the families and the individuals that she's been dealing with who are struggling with mental illness in our community. It's an invaluable program. It's really something that has been extremely successful throughout the county and certainly successful for our people in Falls Township. So she's really helping people. I really appreciate the Board's support, and I hope that we can continue this program.
Thank you.
Chairman Dents? I just want to also add, regarding the co-responder, she has also been working with the code department on, and we roped her into the Falls Cares Program, and she's the social worker aspect of that program.
Excellent. Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
Excellent program, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mullin?
No question.
Mr. Palmer?
No, I support this program 100%.
Any public comment needed?
Thank you.
Any Batiste? Thank you, Chief.
Just a quick question, and that is, can the county start supplying the funds again?
I don't think, it was with a grant. They did not, was, did it come from the county or was it a grant? We had a grant. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
County supplied it?
Tony. So yes, this was a grant obtained by the county for every municipality that has had a co-responder. The counties basically come with the same offer. With a grant funding, they'll fund the program for two years, and then, you know, they ask each municipality to take over that funding at the two-year mark. That doesn't mean there aren't going to be opportunities for grants. There's a grant that we're going to apply for, and if we're successful, we may be able to fund this on our own. But out of an abundance caution, I think it would be good to have it in the budget in case we don't get the grant.
Right. We knew when we got into this that the grant was going to expire, and we would probably end up having to pay for it. It was mostly a pilot program where we wanted to see how it worked out, but we know it's been very, very successful, and it's been a tremendous help in the county, in the township. Any other questions or comments? None? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None. Thank you. Item thirteen. Consideration of memorandum of understanding between Bus Patrol America LLC and Falls Township Police Department. Is this Chief Whitney again?
No.
Me again. This is a memorandum of understanding that we've worked with the chief, as well as representatives of Bus Patrol, to develop a form that was acceptable to the township. What Bus Patrol does is they install camera equipment on school buses, and if a vehicle overtakes a school bus or blows through the stop arm, it will take video and pictures of that vehicle, allowing tickets to be written. Bus Patrol handles all the logistics of actually writing those tickets, and there's actually been recent amendments to the law which now make clear that there will be no fines or costs or anything assessed to the police department in the event that there's a challenge to a fine and that the person is successful in defending that fine. Previously, there had been instances where district justices were assessing damages against township police departments, but that's no longer permitted under the law. So we've worked with Bus Patrol to come up with a form that is acceptable. My understanding is that the program is actually already up and running, and so this just memorializes our understanding with Bus Patrol.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
None.
Mr. Galloway? Ms. Mullin?
No.
I think, sorry, I missed this in review of this packet, so just bear with me. Our cameras are already on the buses?
Yes.
Or on the school bus stops? Up on the arm?
Their arms actually on the, on the school buses themselves, so when a school bus stops, the red lights flash with the stop sign. It's very difficult for police officers to actually catch somebody running those stop arms, so this is similar to a red light camera, and it allows them to capture the video and go after people that way.
Is this on all of the local bus, school buses?
I believe Pensbury has outfitted all their buses. The chief is nodding yes.
This isn't a new program for us, right, Chief Whitney?
No.
Yeah, this isn't, yeah.
Well, I'm fascinated. I didn't know about it. Okay.
So stop going around school buses.
I would never. Okay, thank you.
My understanding is they have written a number of citations, so.
Any public comment needed? No hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen. Consider stipulation to settle an appeal of United States Steel Corporation versus Bucks County Board of Assessments.
I'll be handling that one, Mr. Dents.
What's his name's going to handle this one?
This is a real estate tax assessment appeal. The parcel of land is located at 699 Philadelphia Avenue, Falls Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and further identified as parcel number 13-047-062-003. Bristol, 699 Bristol Partners LLC, who is the taxpayer, owned the property at the time of the appeal and during the tax years at issue. The school district filed an appeal to the Bucks County Court of Common Police, seeking an increase in the assessment, and the school district, in negotiations with the property owner, has decided to settle the appeal. Effective January 1st, 2023, for the 2023 municipal county tax year, and effective July 1st, 2023, for the 2022-2023 school tax year, the taxable assessment on the property shall be increased from $42,000 to $750,900. The property's assessment shall remain at $750,900 for each subsequent tax year until there is another subsequent successful assessment appeal, a change in the property, or a change as permitted by the Board by applicable law. Based on this new assessment, the township is owed by the taxpayer $6,658.83. So if we can have a motion to approve this, I believe this has already been approved by the school district, the assessment appeal will be settled, and we'll get that additional money.
Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
None.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Um, Mr. Dents, I believe you had said item 14, but the item 14 was actually removed from the agenda, so what Mr. Clark was just reading was item 15.
Any other corrections? No? Any public comment needed?
Couldn't even do the one thing correct.
No hands? Is there a motion?
So be it.
Second.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I read the wrong one.
No, they pulled it.
Yes, item 14 was removed. That's not ready to settle yet.
Okay. Item 16, consider adopting ordinance of the Township of Falls Bucks County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 188. of the Township of Falls Bucks County, Pennsylvania, amending chapter one ninety-eight taxation by adding article seven volunteer service tax credit. This is, we have to table this, right?
Yes, I'm going to ask that this matter be tabled to a date certain of the December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the board.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen, consider consideration of a resolution of Falls Township, County of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania establishing annual requirements for the certificate certification of active volunteer service.
And this matter, this goes along with the prior agenda items, so we're asking that that be tabled to the December meeting as well. And this is just to comply with an advertising requirement.
Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item eighteen? Consider proposals from Kofco for furniture for the Falls Township Building Renovation Project.
The board is being asked to consider a furniture proposal for Kofco. This is a portion of the total furniture budget. Uh, the packet that you have in front of you uh includes three different um three different proposals, two of which were for a mock-up, which we which I had actually um told them we no longer needed to do. That was savings of about fifteen thousand dollars. The total amount for this uh proposal is one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-three cents.
Any questions from Mr. Tequita and Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment needed? See no hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes, Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dance?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Authorization to process a portion of settlement between Travelers Insurance Company and employee one one two one nine nine eight seven three as a payroll payment with reimbursement from Travelers Insurance Company. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Dent says this has indicated um there is a uh a a matter that has been uh settled. Um, and it was settled by our insurance company. And as part of that settlement, um some of the money that is being paid to this employee is being paid as as salary. Uh, so for that reason, it has to be paid by by us, but Travelers will be reimbursing us for that that amount. Again, because as I indicated, um, Travelers chose to settle this matter. Uh, and in the negotiations, uh, part of the settlement, part of the settlement amount is to be treated as salary, so it has to come from us first, but there is no cost to the township.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
No, it just sounds like a technical thing, right?
Any, Ms. Mullin?
Just is there no document associated with this item?
There is uh the settlement agreement that Travelers entered into, but we don't need to approve that uh because Travelers is choosing to settle uh the case. And all this is being done is just the authorization to pay it as a as a salary or payroll. So it will show up, I believe, in the um as as payroll.
Okay.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
Any public comment? No hands. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, escrow releases. How many do we have here? KA Fairless, that's complete.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
And that's only one, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty cents. Is there any questions from board members?
No.
Public comment? Again, this isn't our money. This is money we hold in escrow for developers that we give back once their projects are completed. Is there a motion to uh release these funds?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor or can you pull the board?
Yes.
Sorry.
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dance?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Appointments to various boards and commissions. Do we have any tonight? I have none. Anyone?
I have none.
I don't have any, but I just want to I mean, some of these uh positions are probably at the end of their terms in the new year. Uh, so I just kind of want to put that out there to the community. Uh, if you're interested in joining one of our boards to submit a letter of interest to Rose Mall at the township.
Um. Okay, so that takes us to item twenty-two minutes from October twenty-third and November eighth. Any questions or comments on the October twenty-third minutes? Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullman. I know you haven't been here in a while. None?
No.
And how about the twenty or November eighth?
No.
I wasn't at the meeting, but I did watch the meeting. All right, is there a, can we do these both together?
You can, yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented for November twenty-third and November?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Engineers report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, last month, we had nine new earth disturbances um applications submitted. No land developments, no floodplain applications. Uh, highlights, um, updates are in red for the land developments. The North Point, um, Phase One Building One, as well as Lincoln Storage, both operate under a TCO, so they're just waiting for vegetation to establish. Projects will be complete after that. Um, North Point Phase Two Buildings Four, Five, and Six. Uh, I believe Building Four is uh underway with site work nearing completion, where Five and Six are under a TCO as well. For Hyosan and the Waste Management Renewable Natural Gas, typical construction progress is identified in the report um as well as Morton Saw. Um, North Point Area Three, uh, that proceeds and continues with clearing, filling, and compacting. Um, so it's just earthwork at this phase, at this stage. Um, the Geles Phase Three um consists of building instruction, footings and foundations. Um, the Trench Tech Project, we had a pre-construction meeting and construction will commence shortly. Um, the last three were the development projects that you heard tonight. In terms of the earth disturbance updates, um, the middle column, Covanta Phase Three Thirty-Eight Cabot Boulevard are both completed um at long last. Um, the Foglia Residence Pool, Paulson Pool, and the Snipes Properties are all completed as well. Um, in the third column, uh, the Universal Property Leasing Project is completed. And the Dingus Residence has started, as well as the Burns Residence, as well as the North Volk Southern Project, which is pavement restoration. The following nine are the ones that were submitted and they've been reviewed and recommended for earth disturbance permits. In terms of the township projects, the two thousand twenty-one through twenty-three road program is complete. Um, Pine Wood Drive, uh, some remaining punchless items are being uh constructed now. Um, early two thousand and twenty-four, they will be in the maintenance period. Um, the township building renovations, um, site work continues with storm sewer and stormwater management infrastructure. Um, and for the Vermillion Hills Footbridge Project, um, the advertisement has been sent to the manager's office to be posted in the Courier Times anticipating an evaluation in January and the start of construction in March of two thousand twenty-four.
Any questions for Mr. Jones, Mr. Galloway?
No, all good.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
I have none. All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. That takes us to the bill list. We have a bill list in the amount of five million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, fifty-four cents. One point nine, just over one point nine million of that is payroll. Three? Oh, I'm sorry. Nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand to Rycon Construction for the building renovation. Little over half a million dollars to the road program. Seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars um to the fire companies. And so on. Any questions or comments from board members on the bill list?
None.
Ms. Mullin, Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Pa- uh, Galloway, can you pull the board?
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dance?
Yes.
I vote yes.
All right, that takes us to our executive session. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Dent, we didn't do twenty-five or twenty-six.
What?
There are two other bill lists.
Oh, I apologize.
Yep.
We have a bill list for Obermeyer, Rebermann, and Ax Maxwell and Hippel. These are our labor attorneys in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Any questions or comments?
No.
None. Is there a motion to pay that bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dance?
Yes.
I vote yes.
We have a bill list from Jones Engineering Associates for three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. Any questions or comments on that one?
No.
Not. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
Yes, Aaron Mullin?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dance?
Epstein?
I vote yes.
All right, that takes us to our executive session. Ms. Gallagher, I'm gonna skip him this time.
The board did meet an executive session earlier this evening, discussed matters of personnel and potential litigation.
All right, that takes us to board comment. Any board comment, Mr. Ga- oh, I'm sorry, I skipped manager comment. I can do this for you if you want.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, the leaf collection pickup, the last leaf collection day will be this Saturday, December second. So get your leaves on out there. It's funny, we were discussing our friend, um Guido Mariani tonight and how he would always lobby us to get a leaf vacuum truck, which just isn't practical for Falls Township. But we do miss Mr. Mariani at our meetings. That takes us to board comment. Mr. Galloway?
I have no comment tonight.
No comment.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, twenty-eight, we didn't get the twenty-eight, the police report.
He's not here.
I know, but usually we get a copy of it. I mean, um.
Is it not right in front of you?
No, no.
I spoke with the chief, he did, my understanding is he did send a report out to the to the board. If you didn't get a copy, I'll make sure you do get one.
Yeah, I didn't get one. Uh, usually I see it on the podium.
Yeah, he did prepare, he did prepare a report and said he was gonna email it to the board.
Is is that note or is he gonna give us the copy, like?
He he'll continue to give you copies.
Okay.
I'm lost, where was I? Oh, manager board comment.
That's all I had.
I want to congratulate Mr. Galloway on his election to his third term. It's hard to believe that twelve years of your life have been spent here. Ms. Gallow- uh, Ms. Mullin on her election? I know she's excited to be an elected supervisor now and not an appointed supervisor. So congratulations to both of you. I know it was a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Um, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.